Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the May 27 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And first off, ask if you have cell phones or pagers? If you would either turn those off or silence them so they don't ring during the meeting, we would appreciate that. Second, if you are not the applicant and you have come to address us on one of the cases, there are signup sheets that look like this. They're on the table outside the chambers. If you would complete that for the case you'd like to discuss with us and give it to our secretary, we'd be happy to hear you. And with that, we'll go to approval of the minutes of May 13.
Move approval of minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and the minutes are approved.
Our continuance request, we have two uncontested requests for continuance. Items 17, which is C-6217, and item 18, which is C-6221. Both request to defer until June the 10th.
Did anyone come to talk to us about either of those items, 17 or 18?
Move the uncontested continuances.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. That's approved.
There are two new requests for continuance. Item 1, which is PUD 1415, and item 2, PUD 1416. Both request to defer until June the 10th.
Same question again. Did anyone come down today to talk to us about items 1 or 2 on our agenda? Move any requests?
Did you want to continue that to the first meeting or the second meeting in June 10th?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to continue items 1 and 2, both to June 10th. Cast your votes. That's approved. Does anyone else in the audience have a continuance request today? Okay.
Item 3 is CE 782, which is an application by Jackie and Paula McHenry to close easements on part of Southwest 87th Street in Ward 5.
If you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Gary Parrish. I'm the attorney for Jackie McHenry, and my address is 115 Southwest 89th Street. Mr. McHenry has accompanied me here today. This application is-
Would you do me, sir, would you do me a favor, pull the microphone down just a little bit so we-
I'm sorry.
That's great, thank you.
Gotcha. This application is filed by Mr. McHenry and his wife, the trusted owns their property, so that they can close a portion of Southwest 87th Street just to the east of where it dead ends today. If you look at the materials provided by the staff report, you can see that the road that comes through there on Southwest 87th Street is barely a one-lane road as it is. Robinson comes down to it from 89th Street, or up to it from 89th Street, which is also a small road, but only goes to 87th Street. So, the purpose of the closure is so that they can build a home, and there's a couple of creeks back behind there, so where they want to place the home, it would be necessary to close its portion of the road. And to my knowledge, I don't think there have been any objections.
Okay, we do have someone signed up. Mandria Tompkins. If you would come to this microphone over here, please. If you'd give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to this, and tell us what your concern is.
My name's Mandria Tompkins. My address is 2420 South Henni in Choctaw. I'm representing my father, Philip Tompkins, who owns a property that will, if the easement is closed, will cause that land to be landlocked. His future plans are to build two homes back behind the, I can't, it's the, above the second lot over here. Behind those buildings, he's going to build two houses, and if you close that easement, he's not going to be able to get back there to it.
Well, it's my understanding, if I look at this, that the subject area is not improved now, and the property that you're describing is surrounded on three sides by rights-of-way, but no improvement. Is that correct?
I guess I don't under-
In other words, there's no road open. On three, you've got property on three, or roads or rights-of-way on three sides of your property, but none is open.
Okay. Yes, that's the only way for him to get back to it. He's wanting to, like I said, build homes, and he's wanting to have to come off of Robinson in order for them to get back to the homes. He's not wanting them to have to come off of Santa Fe.
Well, but my question is, the section that we're talking about here is in the same condition as the three rights-of-way surrounding this site. Is that correct? That's not improved at the present time?
Right, it's just a few.
I believe that his intentions would be to clear that out and make that accessible, from my knowledge.
How does your father access his land today?
I believe through that easement.
Down what would be-
He goes, he comes down Robinson and-
87th Street?
Yes, yes, sir. And he's also speaking of a fence that's there that's also kind of blocking. If he's wanting to clear that out, that that fence would have to be removed as well on that easement.
I don't know, it would seem to me, Nick, if he wanted to gain access to that property, the easiest way to do that would be come off Santa Fe.
I'm not certain I understand now.
From what he described-
What property does the, can you show us on the overhead, what property the, you own, the applicant owns, and then what property-
This is my office, and I own the property back to the 87th here, all of this. The owner of this property is Frank Wise, and he also has joined in our application, consenting to this. This property here is owned by the McHenry's, and it's in this vicinity, I believe, where you want to build your house, is that correct? And at this point in time, the road ends right here.
Correct. Now, my question is, where does this young lady's father's property lie?
Is that right?
Down south.
Down, down south.
South.
Right there.
Sorry, I don't know my direction.
And those are two, those are two businesses located in front of his property off of Santa Fe. So, instead of having people, if he builds houses, come in from behind those businesses to get to their residence, he's wanting them to come down Robinson, and then I believe it's 87th. That's why the closing of the easement would cause them to not be able to get to the property.
It's a lot longer trip to get to that site, to come off of 89th Street, go down Robinson, and then turn east again on 87th Street.
Well, I don't know that our issue is length of distance traveled. It's whether there's an applicant that feels, a protester that feels adversely affected by the closing of this easement. I might want two accesses too, if I were a property owner. It seems logical.
He also feels that the value of the land would go down if that easement was closed. He wouldn't be able to build the houses that he believes would possibly turn that land into more money for him.
So, right now, if this were, if 87th Street-
This is where she, her property-
Were closed.
It's closed.
The only access your father would have would be off of Santa Fe, or-
Whatever that is.
Yeah, it's Santa Fe.
Yeah.
But that's not open. Broadway, but it's not open.
But so, the only open street is Santa Fe, at this point, on the, which runs on the south side of your father's property.
Correct. And then those aren't, and that isn't open.
No, east side. East side. East side of her father's property.
Oh, it is-
His property is here, is that correct?
Right.
Yes.
Is he on all of this, or-
To my knowledge, he owns the entire-
Okay, so he'd have, he could have access, either between these two.
Talk into the microphone, please, so that we have you for the record.
So, he could have, if he owns this property, he could have access either here, which has never been opened, but is not closed, and/or here, from Santa Fe, which would be much more direct access to his property. Is that be correct?
Well, from, yes, from the way I understand it, yes. But he's, he's wanting the, whomever buys these houses to have to travel through a neighborhood, as opposed to driving around a business, was his main concern, for the value of the property to be what he wanted from it. That's what he was asking.
I have a question about the reason for closing this.
Yes.
Is that there's some indication in the staff report that you're going to build a residence?
Yes.
And you want the residents, I mean, you have, you have a problem with the setbacks from the street?
Yes, well, we've already got the permit for the house, and I've already built the, I've already done the dirt work. So, when they drew it out, it's pushing the house too back. I end up touching, I end, this is, I end up touching, I get within five feet of my neighbors back there, and it's just really bad and nasty back there. It would be beneficial if I could move my house down 20 to 25 feet. It would stay on my property, it would not go into the easement. And if I can't do that, then we're going to have to either figure out a way to change something out to get the house on there. The footprint's 3,700 square feet for the house.
And you're, and the back part of your lot abuts to somebody else's property, is that right?
Yes, the man that's right here, his name's Bill Bowlen, he owns that. And this little area, what they're talking about here, this Lightning Creek runs right through there, or attributable to Lightning Creek runs through there. So, I'm limited on how far I can really, the Corps of Engineers gave me permission to build my house, as long as it's okay with the city. And if, if he does that, then he's got to do something with the creek back there, where the easement runs.
You are having trouble fitting your house up to 87th Street, from a setback standpoint, up to that easement, is that-
Yes, sir.
But would a remedy not be to, instead of closing the street, perhaps obtaining a variance for that?
To the setback. That's the least obtrusive to all the other residents that solves his problem, which, that'd be the easiest way to do. I mean, I can't support an application when, to close a right-of-way when there are parties that own property that are objecting to that for reasonable reasons, that are, it make, her argument makes valid sense, and to cure the setback issue, that's, I think that's a different fix, to me.
Well, if it's just a setback issue, again, I think it could be varied.
Right.
Does, does the creek run across what would be the intersection?
Yes, that, that line right there, pardon my shaking hand, it runs right through here. Right on, just right off the corner of my property, it runs all the way through there.
And it runs across that, what would be the intersection, if all those, if all that, those rights-of-way were improved?
Pardon me?
If those rights-of-way were all improved, the creek would run across the road.
Right. They would have to abide from the drainage that would be there, so they would have to put in some kind of bridge or something, so it wouldn't back up any drainage right there, because it's a tributary to, to Lightning Creek.
So, how is that adequate access to this property, then, if the Lightning Creek runs right across the tract and where this-
And just for the benefit of the commission, if you look at the, one of the exhibits that the staff prepared, the aerial photograph, you can kind of see where that creek runs right directly into that intersection of what would be Southwest 87th Street and Broadway, just to the east of the area there that we're asking to close.
That was why I asked the question. I looked at the aerial.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I've already looked at the aerial, and I can see the creek line. It would be very expensive probably to develop that street, build the box, and all that creek. I still see this as a variance case rather than a-
Street closure.
Closing case, and I agree with Commissioner Hensley.
Okay.
This just looks like we're swatting a net with a-
Well, I'm persuaded.
So, do they go before the Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment, variance, a setback variance.
I think so. So, what do we do with this? Motion to deny?
That's what we would do.
So what?
We have a motion, a second, to deny item 3. Cast your votes. And we suggest you make application for variance to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. You guys.
Item 4 is PC 10256, which is an application by Girl Scouts to rezone 120 Northeast 51st Street from R1 Single Family to O2 General Office and I2 Modern Industrial, Ward 7.
My name is Jim Dawson, and I work for Girl Scouts Western Oklahoma, and the Director of Properties and IT. I live at 18500 Southeast 29th Street in New Walla.
Commissioners, what, obviously they want to inform the surrounding area with the property. No one has signed up.
I'm not going to vote against the Girl Scouts, so I'm going to move approval of the application.
Second.
That was difficult. Motion, a second, to approve item 4. Cast your votes. You're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 5 is SPUD 559, an application by LM Real Estate Company to rezone 13008 Broadway Extension from SPUD 354 to SPUD 559 in Ward 7.
Hello. Malick Massid, 1010 Castle Road, Edmond, Oklahoma, 73024.
Welcome back.
Yes, I want to apologize. The last time I was up here, it was not a good day for me as a whole, and want to come back and see if you all reviewed the way I presented it, and kind of give you-
Well, if you or the staff could walk us through a little bit of what's happened, that would probably help, because the staff report was a little bit confusing. JJ, do you want to do that?
We met with the applicant last week, and actually what he needs is on the Hummer site, or the spud is, Hummer goes away, and Subaru and Land Rover are going to share that building. So, rather than one sign, they need two on that site. So, that adds a sign to the number of overall on the entire dealership. So, our recommendation was, in order to approve it, we should process an administrative amendment to the PUD to delete one of the signs that they have eligible, they still have three signs eligible on the PUD. Delete one of those, then it's really just a wash. We don't, we haven't added any new signs to the site at all.
What's existing, though, will be down one sign versus what we have currently. We're removing two, just adding one.
Also, your request, I think, the last one was something like a 40 or 50-foot sign, and you've reduced it down to 25 foot and 30 foot.
Correct.
And I, well, I don't appreciate any of those signs, but, but this is better than what you came up with last time, and there's not a thing that I can do about the PUD that allows that many signs, and you've reduced it according to your staff report by one.
I will do that. I haven't done that yet.
Of what's allowed under the current PUD.
Somebody else has to make the motion, Bob, is that right?
Not that right.
Any other discussion, commissioners, or in action?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a run at it. I'll move approval of the application, granting the two signs with the administrative amendment to make the deletion. JJ, refer.
Which is the TE, so, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, if a motion, a second, to approve item 5. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you all.
Item 6 is PC 10247, an application by Blue Stem Affiliates to rezone 10300 Northwest 150th Street from AA Agricultural to RMH2 Mobile Home Park in Ward 8.
My name is Harry Johnson. I'm the manager of Blue Stem Affiliates, a family limited liability corporation organized under the laws of State of Oklahoma. Our request is for a zoning change to permit Mobile Home Park. I think Oklahoma City needs a home park on the northwest perimeter. There are many food and maid service people that work in that area, it's country clubs and gated communities. Others do janitorial work and mow lawns. Given their wage level, there's no place out there for them to live, so they have to live in the slums on the south of Oklahoma City, and they have to drive up and down Heffner Parkway, a couple hundred cars a day. So, I think that we need to provide some affordable housing for them out there. Mobile homes cost about a half as much as conventional homes on a per-square-foot basis. They're attractive, they give young people, retired people, people with modest incomes, a chance to live in a clean, healthy environment. And let's face it, somebody has to keep up the McMansions out there, keep them presentable. The Piedmont School District is concerned that a Mobile Home Park won't give them enough revenue, give them more children and less revenue. Actually, I don't think that is the case. You'll have about twice as many mobile homes per acre as you have conventional homes. It's been my experience that the tax assessor doesn't really have a problem squeezing out whatever he needs. I place, pay several hundred thousand dollars a year out there, and I don't have any kids or grandkids left in school. I'm glad to do it. I'm not griping about it. So, I think that that's not really a problem. Now, we do have a protest from Gary Varnell at Sundance Air Park, and if I can hold up an aerial, I think it will be easier to explain this. I hope you can see this, you can see the airpark over here on my left, on your right, and the red line running north from it is an extended centerline, and Gary's a little bit mistaken, because there is no air traffic permitted east of the Sundance runway. If you're landing on 35 from the north, you have to stay on the centerline, or west of the field, and enter a right base, excuse me, a left base. If you're taking off to the north on runway 35, you have to go straight out, or you have to make a left turn to the west. The area that you see there-
That here's, and over the property, which is in red, that's a no-fly zone. There's no air traffic permitted there. It's restricted airspace.
There's a question whether this is Class C or Class D. If it's Class D, you have to remain 1,200 feet above ground level. If it's Class C, you've got to remain 3,000 feet above ground level. So, there's really not going to be any interference whatsoever, whatsoever, between the airport and us. I live right next to the airport, but I love airplanes, and you know, I've never squawked about anything, even though they do violate the traffic pattern, and I'm not about to. I just, if they can keep from crashing into my house, I'm happy. The staff has suggested we need a PUD. I think for 40 acres, a PUD is a little bit of overkill. Certainly, if this sells, and it's my, it's our intent really to get a professional Mobile Home Park developer, knows what he's doing, can make an attractive park, and at that point, the Planning Commission will certainly have ample time and authority to see that it's something that fits the master plan and doesn't detract from the neighborhood.
Well, Mr. Johnson, the staff has some concerns, like density, traffic, and so forth, that a PUD would solve. I think, based on what I've seen and what I know of that area, PUD would be required at a minimum for this to be considered, at least by me. And I'm not sure the people in South Oklahoma City would appreciate the description of their neighborhood that you expressed earlier, so I'd ask you not to do that again.
Well, I think if we drove through just immediately south of it-
That's enough. We don't want to hear about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Doesn't change the facts.
Chairman, if I could, I question whether a PUD case would be appropriate, in that I don't think, if Mr. Johnson wants to stick with this use and this density, PUD necessarily would-
Solve it.
Would solve it. And the reasons for that is, yes, we do have a protest from the airport. I agree with what Mr. Johnson said about the airport, the configuration, and all that. However, things can go bad for a pilot too, and this is in very close proximity. Yes, it's restricted, but if things go bad, might be parking a plane right in the middle of that trailer park. If you look at the northwest sector plan that was just completed, the goal is to accommodate growth while preserving the character and appearance, a well-planned community. I don't believe that necessarily fits this application. The objective, develop, development should preserve the natural features, topography, and a positive fiscal impact on the community. We are jamming many dwelling units on the 40 acres as we possibly can here. Again, I think that's inconsistent with this objective. And then, from an infrastructure standpoint, this 40 acres runs out on to 150th Street. Has anyone driven down 150th Street lately? It's less than an improved super collector street, or arterial. This is just not an appropriate time or use for that land, in my opinion. Therefore, I can't support it, I couldn't support it in a, in a PUD.
Is Gary Hall here? Sir, would you like to come up and address us? If you two would give us your name and address, please.
My name is Gary R. Hall. Live at 3735 Northwest 42nd Street, Oklahoma City, 73112. In the subject area, my wife and own 17-plus acres there. It will be detrimental to any home we build, any property we sell. Guess the old story is, not in my backyard. But if it was right, my backyard is, is welcome to this. Moving something from the south side up there, that doesn't make sense. Number two, 400 trailers, with or without wheels. You're going to put an average, this used to be an average of 2.5 children per trailer, which equals 1,000 children, if everything's like. School system out there is Piedmont School, fantastic school system, but they are fighting right now to find enough room for the children that live there. The sewage system, 1,000 people, 400 trailers, that's a load. Water system, that is a load. All of this has to be upgraded by, I suppose, our city, my Texas. I believe that should be it. 400 into 85 acres, very, very, very little room. I, see, Mac, at one time, I came up with less than 2,000 square foot for a trailer in that. I believe that's all I have, but it's just the load that is put out there, we are going to have to pay for. It is in a floodplain, there's a huge creek just to the other side, to the north of it, and there is an earthen dam to the south of it. I don't recall how many acres, but it's a, it's a very large lake, but it is an earthen dam. Who maintains it, right now, I do not know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I respond?
You may.
If I recall, I believe the demographics on Oklahoma City are 2.1 children per household, so that's not going to distort that a whole lot. Number two, Mr. Hall owns raw acreage out there, which he uses to dump stuff. He's actually had the flood control pond he speaks of, he's helped fill up, because he's built a couple of dams, dumped a bunch of dirt- built a couple of dams, dumped a bunch of dirt, which with these recent rains has washed into the flood control. The soil conservation people are a little upset about that, so I wonder if he has much credibility coming before you today.
I'm going to let that one go. Commissioners, any discussion or action?
Well, being a south sider, I'll try not to hold that against you. It'll be a little difficult, sir, um, but I'll try to be fair. Uh, I'll make a motion to deny.
Second. We have a motion to deny item six. Cast your votes. You are denied.
Thank you for your time. I'm not surprised.
Item seven is ABC 713, an application by Cool Greens for an ABC1 alcoholic beverage consumption restaurant, overlaying C3 Community Commercial, 14201 North May Avenue in Ward 8.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Wolfe, and I'm appearing on behalf of Cool Greens 2 LLC. I'm an owner and an attorney. I'll be honest with you, I've not been through this process before, so I'm not sure if I'm supposed to present an argument or a...
We'll, we'll go easy on you.
Thank you.
And commissioners, no one has signed up. I move approval. For motion and second to approve item seven, cast your votes. You've got a logical business in a logical place, so that's...
Thank you.
Item eight is C 6210, a final plat of Paycom located north of Memorial Road and east of Council in Ward 8.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant. This is a 14-acre tract that is part of a very large 320-acre P U D that's several years old. Uh, this will be the location for the Paycom payroll LLC corporate offices. Uh, there'll be, construction on a new building has started here. Uh, eventually, there'll be three buildings on this plat, so we are proposing a single lot, single block, uh, plat with a common area for a pond in front and private access, a private storm sewer. Happy to answer any questions. We agree with all the TEs.
First building will be how large, Tim?
90,000 square feet.
So that will be what we call Phase One?
Yes.
And that, uh, no traffic changes are required for Phase One, but when you come in for Phase Two, an update will be required?
Yes. We're not sure it'll be warranted. The improvements on Memorial Road and the crossover at Council, all the pavement has been improved. Uh, the question will be is whether or not we'll have enough to warrant a signal there at that time. And that'll be something we'll have to go traffic commission for.
I say, I understood from Stewart that he'd want an opportunity to look at it as you proposed Phase Two.
That's right, and we agreed to that.
Okay. No one signed up. Commissioners, discussion, questions, comments, action? Move approval. A motion and second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item nine is ABC 714, an application by Northwestern Associates for an ABC2 overlaying community commercial, 6714 Northwestern.
I'm Craig May. I'm a lawyer for the Northwestern Associates LLC. I could try Mr. Wolfe's approach and tell you that this is my first time here, too, so maybe I'll have the same luck. I'm at 501 Northwest Grand, Oklahoma City.
We cut the last guy slack. I'm not sure we're going to do that again.
We, this is an application for an ABC overlay in the former Iguana Lounge location on Northwest, 6714 Northwestern. We're going to be, our tenant is going to be an upscale, probably a step up from a Houston's, if you're familiar with that, with a, um, large selection of wine, but primarily a food and service business.
Okay, we...
Mr. Chairman?
Move approval.
We gave the other guy a pass. I think it's only appropriate that I'll second this motion.
Good. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you very much.
Item 10 is C 5423, an extension of the preliminary plat of MacArthur Point Apartments, Ward 3.
This is automatic. Move approval. We have a motion and second to approve item 10. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 11 is an ordinance for public hearing amending Chapter 59 of the City Municipal Code pertaining to the Bricktown Core District Use Regulations by deleting the use unit for eating establishments drive-in and eating establishments fast food with drive-through window.
And we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, a motion, second to approve item 11. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 12 is to introduce and set for public hearing on June 24th an ordinance relating to advertising and signs, amending the Municipal Code, Chapter 3, um, amending general prohibitions and amending accessory sign regulations relating to EMD signs and declaring an emergency.
So we need a motion to set, introduce and set.
Moved and we set. Second.
A motion and second to approve item 12. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item 13 is to introduce and set for public hearing on June 24th an ordinance amending Chapter 59, amending design review requirements and sign guidelines, correcting code references in the use table, and amending design review requirements and sign guidelines and declaring an emergency.
Same action. We need to introduce and set.
I moved, we introduce and set this, uh, item.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve item 13. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 14 is to introduce and set for public hearing on June 24th an ordinance relating to advertising and signs, amending the Municipal Code, uh, amending accessory sign prohibitions, revising definitions, revising temporary signs and display materials not requiring a permit, and amending accessory sign regulation regulated by zoning districts and declaring an emergency.
Same action, introduce and set?
Moved and, uh, set this item for a public hearing.
Second.
A motion and second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 15 is to introduce and set for public hearing on June 24th and other ordinance amendments relating to zoning and planning code, amending Chapter 59. And this is regarding, uh, a, a number of modifications in the Bricktown and Downtown districts.
Same action.
We moved, uh, introduce and set this item.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve item 15. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 16 is the item regarding Northeast 23rd Street Overlay District.
Yes, we set a deferral to the 24th of June rather than an introduction.
Second. I'll move that, based on our conversations that we had in our, uh, earlier session with respect to this, I'd like an opportunity to speak with Councilman Kelly and get an idea about what we're trying to accomplish here with this, so...
Okay, so we have a motion and second to defer to June 24th, item 16. Cast your votes, and that is approved. 16 and 17 are continued. So we are to Planning Commission committees, any reports? Planning Commission members? Planning Department, Russell, nothing, this one? Wow. Development Services Department, JJ? Municipal Council's office, Susan? Motion to adjourn? Adjournment approved.